Did anybody else have any comments or corrections?
Well, the only thing that I just see on page seven, and it probably doesn't really matter because we're talking about the Beach Home Village, and I just don't understand this sentence. It is automatic that the issue be resolved within two thirty days? I'm not sure what that means.
No, that's not...
Maybe I said imperative? I'm not sure. I mean, it was just about trying to, you know, get the issue to the table and... Or maybe we were talking about the requirement that they don't issue the COs?
I think we should table these. I'll listen to it again at the end. I had honestly got... I was doing something else for DMV because I was just worried about that part of your level of hearing.
Yeah, which is fine if you don't think it's a big issue. I just...
No, you didn't say that. I don't think it should be.
Okay.
So if you don't mind, we'll table it to April?
Sure.
And I'll check on that, and the other stuff we've got is conveyed to Terry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Slow move.
Okay. All right, so moving on. So our first matter of old business is application zero five dash twenty, Christina K Snyder, three Somerset Road. I believe the applicant is representing herself today. Sitting on this one is myself, Lisa. Mark Pore, you're sitting in on this one because Mike's not... Michael's not here.
I can't. I didn't sit on it. I want to open. I may always at the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
You're at the table. So all right, so Jeff and Jim. One, two, three, four, five. Okay.
Hi, Christina K Snyder, homeowner.
I just wanted to say before we get started, I appreciate very much the material that you put together and the timeline that you put together. That was extremely helpful and really helped connect the dots that I was looking for for how things went and how things were submitted and viewed, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone have any... Did anyone have any new questions for Ms. Snyder? And Jim, did you... She answered your question about the cost?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry. Did she answer the question about your cost?
In the center part of the Q and A page, page number fifty-two of the packet, the financial hardship question. So to move the house, it's somewhere north of one sixty-six... Hundred and sixty-six thousand. To tear off the porch is just over twelve thousand. Original cost of porch is estimated around twenty-eight thousand, and all estimates are in the packet as well.
And were you able to locate the plan that was... Talk about last month, whether it was the surveyor's plan or another plan?
So there is no other plan in the building file. So if back to the timeline, it really starts, the first communication of HDC plans over to the surveyor was October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. The HDC plans include the porch shown, and then there's a sketch that I did, and you have a copy of the email in your packet as well as the documents in your packet. So again, I'm not a surveyor, but I sketched out the property as I had hoped to have it.
So the HDC plan shows the porch. It doesn't... Yeah, it doesn't show a setback, but yeah. It does... It shows the porch in yellow.
And then on the HDC application, it also states, "On August twenty-eighth of two thousand and eighteen, the porch is not only shown on the plans, it's on Val Oliver's site plan, and the porch information and dimensions are stated on the application."
Yeah, this is your site plan, the sketch?
That was my sketch, yeah.
Because it certainly looks like you're really close to the property line in that sketch. I'm not sure if that's the property line or the setback, but it's...
Well, and there's also another ten feet between the property line and the edge of the road.
Right.
So that's a little misleading.
Right, but I'm saying you're showing your house much closer. This plan shows your house way in the setback.
It's just a designer drawing, not... I mean, it was just to give the surveyor a guide of where I wanted to hopefully set the property up.
I have a procedural question. If I didn't sit on it, or if a member did not sit, can they still participate in conversation and just not vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's all about the discussion.
All right, so I can discuss this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Discuss away.
I'm not quite there yet. I just wanted to make...
Is just removing the porch out of the question for you? Has you gone... Have you gone to the HDC and asked them about what they feel about that?
So I went to HDC. I asked Val, just because they were the approved plans with the porch on it. She said that they don't weigh in that it's a ZVA issue. It's a financial issue for me. There's no CO been issued, so there's no refinancing with the bank, so there's no money to take the porch off, let alone what I've already...
Would it be in violation of HDC if you removed it?
She said it's... She said, uh...
Yeah, it would be. It wouldn't match the approval.
Which is why I got the approv... Which is why I went down the path of getting the house move information because that was with the plan, so I didn't know if that was going to be a sticking point.
So that's the one twenty-eight to pick up the building and move it?
Yes, and it's north of one...
That doesn't include the foundation, though.
What's that?
That's just picking up the building.
The one twenty-eight's just picking it up. If you look on the picarchic inform...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That includes the foundation information. It does not include the utility disconnection and reconnection.
So given the fact that I wasn't here, what... Was the billing permit issued with the porch on it?
With the deck. It says deck under sketching.
In the setback?
Sketching provides work.
No.
No, it just...
No, Joe...
They paid a fee for that.
Joe missed... Joe missed... Joe Markling was here, and he missed the porch completely and set the building at the setback, not the porch.
So he did fall on the sword.
He did. He was here last week.
He did, but there... He did, but there was confusion with, in my mind, from... You know, this is the plan that Linda, the applicant, provided, saying that this was what the surveyor went off of. This was the plan he used, which, you know, just shows a box because it's a septic plan, sewer traction plan, and... Oops. And it says right on it, you know, the... These are... The building locations are approximate and should be remeasured and verified before any construction happens and any of that. There's no detail. I mean, I can't imagine that a surveyor... I don't understand how he... So anyway, I pushed to say that this was the plan that he went off because that was what Linda Williams was saying, and he said this was not the plan that he went off. But there's been no other plan provided to show what he did go off, but Christie has provided us with all the other plans which do show the porch, so...
Well, I just find it hard to believe that he wouldn't put the porch on the plan if he had...
I hear the point.
Oh, you're here.
Oh, there's Joe right there. I didn't even see.
We were here.
I just... I'm here.
You didn't see that? You look good.
All right, well, then maybe you can clarify.
Well, I'll... I'll... Christie and I discussed this, and we're not quite on the same page.
Joe, could you just like... Can you just identify yourself for the...
Sure. Joe Markling here.
Thank you.
I'm the surveyor. This is the plan that I got. I don't know when. It was early on. Well, no, I only have three. And I...
This was a sketch for the original driveway application. It was modified under special permit later on, but this was more about the driveway. Again, I'm not a surveyor. It's just showing the location of the structures.
Okay, so in my recollection was we had this, which is definitely a sketch.
Can you go to the microphone, Joe? Thanks.
So in my recollection, I had that, which is definitely a sketch, and the dimensions that are shown are the dimensions of the foundation. What, you know, more or less, you know, they're boxes. They don't show all the jogs, but...
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we laid out.
Okay.
Sometime...
Sorry.
Okay, so... Do you see?
Yep.
I mean, that's...
That matches the building footprint.
That matches the building footprints, and it matches the setbacks as I laid out. That matches the foundation.
Right.
So when some... Now, we're in confusion about when I got the foundation plans or the building plans, but when I got that, in my mind, I was checking to see, does the foundation match up with that sketch, which...
Which it did. Mm-hmm.
And I didn't see the porch or the deck on the other... Not that I didn't see it. I was, you know, focused on the foundation. I didn't... So, you know, that's what I relied on to lay it out.
Did you write the twenty-seven, six, and the sixty on this, or was that on the...
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's clearly to the foundation that you're giving... Yeah, those are thirty feet.
Yeah. So, you know, I did miss that there was a porch in the front later, and I did end up with those plans. So this was the kind of thing, I mean, you know, the construction people, design people, you know, the excavator's going to be there, got to get the hole dug. We rushed over and did it, and really, there was no harm then even, you know, because they overdig the hole. But then in between there, when it was time to set the footings, is when I... That's when I should have caught the front porch.
And do you have a work plan? Do you guys do a little plan that shows what you're working off of when you go to set those footings in your office, or how do you...
Yeah, I mean, it basically is the same plan that we end up with, the sewer plan and the... You know, but we never... We never provided a site plan. So then we did a sewer design, and then we did show the foundation as thirty at the time we did the sewer as-built. And there is a later plan. We did a plan, because I was confused. Jeff asked when the... We found out it was in November. We did a plan for the aprons because Christie changed the...
Is that in here?
Yes, the... On November eighth, the final as-built is what showed, but it didn't have the driveway aprons, so it had to be resubmitted. So the final as-built was resubmitted on twelve-five, two thousand and nineteen to show the aprons.
Right, and that's in the packet here.
Yes, and there was... And that's referencing special permit number forty-three dash nineteen, the approval for the second driveway.
When was the... When was this landscape planned on? On page forty-nine of our packet?
I don't have the full packet. Could I see it?
It's the one you drew.
Oh, the one I drew?
Yeah. I think it went with the email.
We had it last time.
Yeah.
It was in the packet last time.
No, I understand, but when was it drawn? I mean...
No, I know that. It's...
Oh, that was drawn August of two thou... Maybe prior, somewhere between June and August of two thousand and eighteen.
And what was... When was this one done, the driveway?
That was for the original driveway application.
But it clearly shows the porch in the setback. If the cottage and house were... If the cottage was thirty feet, always, I mean, it clearly shows that it was meant to be there. It's sort of... Not meant to be there, but...
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's thirty feet. You're talking the landscape plan?
Yeah, because the house is so much ahead of the cottage.
By the...
No, on the previous plan, they were in line, thirty feet.
Yeah. Oh, I got you, based on that.
And then all of a sudden, not in line.
And forgive me, I mean, again, I'm not a surveyor. They were sketches for other purposes, not for foundation placements.
This is a tough one for me because I think I said this last time, but I'll say it again. You know, when we've had... We've had issues like this before, when it's something that's integral to the structure of the house, it's...
It's getting a lot of times.
It's hard to rework the house to deal with the intrusion. On this one, because it's a porch, which is, you know, an add-on without a foundation, and I could, you know, could come off and solve the intrusion. It's, you know, and I appreciate Joe, you know, owning the mistake and all of that.
If I may mention also, the abutter is the road, and so there... It's not as if an abutter is complaining.
I get that, but I, you know, Linda made a big point about that last time, and I... The road, that I don't... That argument, I don't think really...
Well, and I...
Is a good one because if... Because the roadway layout is always, you know, kept larger for certain purposes.
Right, and so there's another ten feet to the actual physical road, so it doesn't even... Which is probably why, one of the reasons it wasn't caught, because it doesn't look too close to the road.
But that's true for like every road everywhere.
Well, just worth mentioning.
Yeah, I guess, but I just... I don't want to... I don't want to... The setbacks are there for a reason, and, you know, there's a point to not building up to the road. If, you know, if the house was back, then the porch was back, then the driveway was back, the picture that shows, you know, the car parked, that car would be further back than the road, which, you know, there's a reasoning to the aesthetic of the neighborhood to have the roadway and have that space. So I don't think the road actually qualifies as an abutter.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Joe, do you have the set of drawings that were sent to you, the full set of Huntington plans that were sent to you in ten-twenty-three?
I have Huntington plans, yeah.
Do you have them there, the ones that you staked off of?
Yeah.
Let's want to see the foundation plan.
Okay. This is the cottage.
Yeah, no, just for the house. This was not a violation. That was good.
No, the cottage is a violation.
No, cottage is at thirty feet, right?
The cottage is correct.
The cottage is okay.
The cottage is...
This one.
The correct setbacks.
This building.
Are we talking about what's on the ground or what's on the...
What they submitted. She said that you got drawings, ten-twenty-three, showing porch on first floor of exterior renderings, but I was also curious. You probably staked off of the foundation plan for the main house, right? That was... That's what you would have staked off of, so I want to see what they sent you to stake off of the main house.
Here.
So does that have a foundation?
I don't know. I didn't... I didn't see the foundation plan, but I'm pretty sure that I had one.
Do you have a foundation plan?
Yes, it's part...
I didn't see it in your packet? No.
Yeah.
I did have one.
I couldn't discover it. Looks just like the first one.
Except it's the...
Yeah.
Yeah. That's definitely not in here.
No, I couldn't find it.
It's not in the email that...
It's not in the packet, no.
Provided with the...
Huntington plans?
No.
No. And it should be a different-looking plan than a first-floor plan, Joe.
It is. It is. It's in the Huntington plans.
Not with what we have.
Okay.
At least I don't... I don't see it.
It goes with the... It goes with the...
So I guess Mike...
Well, Huntington Homes always does a foundation plan for any building they're going to set because they show the support beam location and the details for that. Their package for homes consists of sixty, seventy drawings in total.
This is the whole Huntington packet that comes with...
Yeah, so there would have been a foundation plan in those documents. I think the observation I'd like to make is, I've done enough development with Huntington Homes to know that in their contracts, if they're not building it, they don't show it. And that holds true even for sonitudes for porches. It's just the way they want to make sure that they are not liable for any other purpose.
Right.
We're missing... We're missing the front portion of it.
This is what they...
And...
Well, there must be something that went in with your building permit.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mark. Sorry.
There would be a set of site copied drawings that were issued with permit.
Yeah, because those would have had to have shown the sonitudes.
That's correct. They should have.
Right, that's the HDC. We're looking for what was submitted. Do you have your billing permit and the plans that were stamped by the building department?
Yes, I have copies of it.
That's what we need.
Doesn't need.
There you go, the site copy plans.
This is it.
If there's a foundation plan in that, this typically...
I'm gonna try to see.
The full set of Huntington Home plans would have been stamped site copy.
Right.
As part of the requirements for issuance.
Then one would presume that there would have been some structural...
Here we go.
Structural drawings.
Is that the main house on the cottage?
Oh, I don't know.
That's...
I wouldn't know why we would be even...
They're all together.
Okay, I was going to say, well, we have cottage, though.
I think that's cottage.
Okay, that is cottage.
Yeah, it is cottage.
But we're looking for that same package of the main house.
The cottage... What about the stairs in the setback?
That wasn't issued to you yet, was it?
Oh, that might fall under that bylaw.
What about the stair?
No, it's issued when you get the building permit.
Does that fall under the bylaw?
That's why they call it site copy.
It's the stupid...
You're supposed to require my audience to do that on-site with the building permit.
And then we talked about what...
I've compared it.
Yeah, that's...
Need to see it.
It's on the cottage.
No, we didn't talk about that.
Yeah, no worries. We had it. My former thought if it was under...
What I'm trying to get at is, I think it might clarify the issue that we have at hand because they never show the sonitudes, and then I could understand why Joe would have something that was more specific to the permit that he was working off of.
And I did face off with, I think, with your question on the foundation, which I included in the Q and A.
Yes.
It does not... The foundation plan does not show anything to the porch. On any of the initial plans, it says, you know, built by owner, built by owner.
Right. So I just noticed something else, and I just wanted to ask Eleanor, what's the bylaw on platforms? Because it looks like the cottage is actually over the setback as well with the platform and the step. I know steps are allowed.
Two feet or something like that.
With steps...
The platform and the step.
But how much is it?
I can't... That says twenty-six, I think, goes forward.
It's within...
You can encroach into two feet with a platform and a step.
This is four feet. All right. So the cottage...
Yeah.
Okay.
Was it under the ground cover definition?
No, it's under the setback definition.
It's under the setback, yeah.
That's where it used to be. It's that very long sentence that says...
And it's a little confusing.
Structures.
Structures, yeah.
Yeah.
So let me get that. I don't know if that was properly noted, then if that's a whole separate thing that we have to deal with depending on what this...
Well, they didn't... It wasn't flagged on the letter from the building commissioner or Marcus, right? No, the CEO's been issued.
Really? Well, then the bylaw must be allowing it.
I wouldn't go that far, but...
All right. So definition of structure under one thirty-nine-two A, anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a fixed location on the ground. Structure shall be construed where the context allows, as though form followed by the words or part thereof, and shall include, but not be limited to, buildings retaining walls which support buildings, platforms, antenna towers, steel storage containers, lighthouses, docks, decks, chimneys, tents, and game courts. Structures shall not include retaining walls not exceeding four feet in height for landscaping purposes, fences, rubbish bins, underground propane tanks, stairs, access ramps, or platforms that provide the minimum building code compliant access to a structure, and that extend into the required front, side, or rear yard setback less than a depth of three feet, and with a total area less than twenty square feet on a lot containing less than forty thousand square feet, and a maximum of two above-ground propane tanks not to exceed one hundred and twenty.
So the platform has to be less than...
Less than twenty square feet in total, I would think, including...
Right, but then also it says not to encroach any closer than...
Three feet.
Three feet, and this is... The platform might be three feet, but the step is four feet. But was that platform and step?
Isn't there something new about the steps?
That... She just read it.
Oh, that was the whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So right now, the bottom step of the cottage is... I mean, maybe it's not in front of us because they didn't flag it, and she has a CL, but...
Well, it should be fixed anyway.
Well, you know...
I mean, even if there's a CL when we notice a problem.
Yeah. The way it reads, right, Eleanor, is the platform and the steps have to be no... Encroach no more than three feet, not just the platform. It just says, "The platform that provide the minimum building code compliant access to a structure, and that extend into the required front, side, rear setback less than a depth of three feet, and within a total area less than twenty square feet on a lot less than forty thousand square feet." That's definitely not twenty square feet.
Right, but isn't in there something that goes further about the steps themselves? Can they be in the setback?
That's how they modify it, that it used to be, remember Stephen Cohen's article?
Well, if you have a platform, you have to get from the platform to the ground, so I'm just curious.
And it says and... Can you read it?
The ground to get to the platform?
Here.
We don't have to get stuck on it.
No, I don't want to get stuck on it, but I don't want to... It's true.
Where they moved the house forward on a lot subdivided under one fifty-nine or whatever, subdivision.
Anything else?
Yeah. And when they did that, they didn't account for the platform and the step. And we granted them relief on some basis.
So...
They allow that to happen.
Within the platform?
No, this is on Atlantic Avenue.
So it has to be less than the depth of three feet.
First of all.
Yeah.
They subdivided, moved the house forward so they could put another building.
It has to be, first of all, the minimum building code compliant access.
For the platform and step.
And, and extend less than three feet to qualify as not a structure. So all three, all three of those, then it has to be less than twenty square feet, less than three feet into the setback, and provide the minimum building code compliant access. If it doesn't do any of one of those three, then it is considered a structure and in the setback. That's my reading, so.
Is that just for the platform or does that include the steps?
It doesn't include the step.
So, I mean, that could be, that could be less than three feet into the setback.
It could be, I'm, I'm just asking, um.
How, how wide is a, is a step usually?
Well, it's not, I don't think, well, they're usually at least, uh. Here, or outside, maybe twelve inches?
I'd call it twelve, and then it's twenty-seven, and then it's quote-unquote compliant, I don't.
It's certainly less than twenty.
And I, that makes no sense to me that you can have, have a platform and then multiple steps come, I mean, you could have ten steps come.
There's something about the steps though.
It's two, it's limited to two, I thought it was limited to two steps.
Yes.
Two treads, not one, that's very confusing, anyway.
It's an idiomatic phrase.
Because stairs.
What?
Structures shall not include all these things, um, including stairs, access ramps, wall platforms.
Alright, well, alright.
Provide, so stairs is in there, that's the buy. The minimum building code compliant access.
But, but it still says it's minimum building code compliant access and not to exceed three feet into the setback, and to be below twenty square feet total.
Yeah.
So this is four feet, so even if stairs, if stairs.
I think it's measured to the tip of the, the edge of the stair, if the stair is twelve.
Probably three feet away.
But what about the stair?
Well, that's the question, they don't mention the stair.
No, she said it, she just said it includes, it doesn't include stairs unless it, if it meets those three criteria, which this doesn't if it's four feet. It's, the stair is then in the setback.
Well, platform has to be at least three feet deep to meet the minimum compliant egress from an egress door. I mean, that's code.
Okay.
And the platform is.
Beyond that, to get down the grade is beyond that.
The platform is three feet, and then the stair is actually a granite slab, so it's not a structural built.
Okay, so then that.
I mean, if they gave the C O, I don't.
Then that works, okay, alright, so move, let's move back to what we were on, um. Where were we, Ed, before you talked about this, this stuff?
Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know exactly what was being discussed, that, uh, so it's not, you're, you're not seeking relief based on the, um, and does this bylaw even still exist where if the surveyor makes the mistake and you catch it at the foundation though? You're supposed to, I thought, it's supposed to be surveyed at the foundation.
For ground cover, probably.
Just ground cover.
Yeah, but I mean, for setbacks, decks count.
Are, are you talking about the, what Michael always refers to, or he has referred to?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't think this falls.
Ground cover, I thought it was, that, that, that's the extent to which it can be a surveyor, you know, error.
I think we've had that, people come in with surveyor error with buildings finished before.
John Ray came in on a file with, um, West Chester. It was not in compliance, I never searched.
Yeah, I mean, usually we don't, usually, I mean, let's be frank, it's like a corner of the building.
It's not a whole porch.
It's not like a whole.
Yeah, I mean, this runs the entire.
Yeah, right.
But to answer the question, I was searching, I was, um, seeking relief from section one three-nine dash one-six dot C, two.
I read it.
Um, if it's helpful, I can read it, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to validate.
Sorry, Joe, please stop.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to validate unintentional setback intrusions not greater than five feet into a required yard and not closer than four feet from a lot line, provided that it shall first find that the burden of correcting the intrusion substantially outweighs any benefit to an abutter of eliminating the intrusion, and if the intruding structure was so cited after nineteen ninety, the sitting of the structure was reasonably based upon a licensed survey.
I mean, I personally can hang my hat on that, I mean, Joe is here, he's stood up, he said he made a mistake, uh, the bylaw is theirs, so we can grant this relief through a special permit. I don't like it, but I would be willing to vote for it. Is the sta- is the step that's clo- that's closer than twenty-five feet, is that a wooden step?
It's a granite slab, which I can, I can happily do some regrading.
Sure it's a granite slab, because it doesn't look like in the pictures, it looks like a wooden step.
I'm positive it's a granite slab.
The one that's at twenty-three, six?
Twenty-three, six or something?
Yes, off the porch.
Step could be moved to the side and the railing could be taken.
Right, I mean, that, you know, if that's a wooden step, that's gotta go.
It's not a wooden step, it's a granite slab, and again, I already had the quote done to regrade to eliminate the front step, because I knew that put it another foot farther in.
Yeah, I think as, as minimum, that should take place. One minute, that stuff. If, if people feel that is questionable. It's frustrating.
Yeah, so.
I mean, the question is, is it, was it on, you know, and I'm not disbelieving anybody, but how, how does one prove the unintentionality? I mean, I put my building there and then I said, oops.
Right, and we don't have a foundation plan, Joe doesn't have a foundation plan to show us. I mean, just as expected, a lot of information of what he staked off of, that's concrete.
There was a foundation plan, I couldn't find it on my computer or any emails, but I'm positive there was one.
Well, and this, this, and this, this.
It looked similar to.
And it's in the packet from Huntington that went to the building department, too.
Which is what we were looking for, but you only have a.
I only have the smaller, the full-size, yeah, the full-size, I know.
What about a full drawing that shows the structural potential, the structural part of the porch, like a framing plan that shows?
They don't provide any of that, it's.
No, no, but somebody must have.
Uh, it's on.
And Val must have provided it.
Yes, so it's on Val's plans, yes, that went through all the application processes. And then Huntington just provides the box structure, but, but yes, they're all in the building plans.
Right, so when you submitted to the building permit, you submitted Val's plan.
Yes, that has the porch detail.
Those.
Yes.
Not just the, in half, not just the elevations and the floor plan, I'm talking about the structural.
The actual building plan?
Yeah, that shows the sonitudes.
It shows the framing for the deck.
I mean, because Joe should have had that plan.
Yeah, I think that some, there's some responsibility on the owner slash contractors to provide all of the information to the surveyor.
Right, and if he was only given the Huntington Home plan, then.
He was, he was given all plans from, and that's why I included the email and.
I'm talking about the, a foundation plan that shows the porch.
He was given the, uh, HDC approved plans, which had the foundation plan in it.
These plans?
But, but it's not.
No, the HDC plans wouldn't have had a foundation plan.
Interesting, I mean, it's also, there's a plan from Val that shows the porch outside of the setback.
Right. So if you have a HDC plan that shows the foundation that got sent to Joe, that shows the sonitudes.
Well, how does this fit into the puzzle, where, where this shows it outside of the thirty with the porch on it?
Right, Val's plan shows it correctly cited.
Right.
Yeah.
So how did it get pushed up five?
What's the date, what's the date on that one? Twenty-one.
That is eight eighteen eighteen.
Eight twenty-eight, eighteen.
Twenty-one, I think.
Twenty-one.
Okay, so that, right, because then, um, so this, because Joe, your plan wasn't done until later, right, that's the one I circled, eight eighteen eighteen, and then the other one was done in December?
The sewer plan? Uh, when was this little plan provided?
That was for the driveway application, which would have been needed for the building permit, which would have, which was submitted on twelve twenty eighteen.
Twelve twenty, and Val's plan was eight.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, so it was done well ahead, showing the porch outside of the setback. Unfortunately, this plan is.
Just re-.
No, I know that, but it shows the building in the setback.
Well, right, and not, I mean, not being a, not being a surveyor, I know.
I know, well, that's why.
I'll never sketch again.
Well, I don't understand, I guess, why Val's HDC plans have the building outside the setback with the porch on it? Then how, then what information was then given to Joe that showed that building five feet forward? Or why did you put it?
This was planned.
I hit that.
Just this?
But that can't be, you can't, who?
I don't recollect that, this Val's, Val's site.
Well, it's right here, I'm looking at it, it was HDC approved on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and it shows the porch seemingly outside of the thirty feet.
I mean, it says you got the plan.
I'm not denying that, I'm telling you.
You never saw that?
I don't recollect that.
Okay, but ten twenty-three eighteen, sent Joe marketing there, HDC approved plans and sketch of site to show first and second dwelling suggested locations. That's probably where the problem happened, because your site plan, that sketch, shows the building over the setback.
And that's, you're talking, that's the one that's pa- starts the email on page forty? And then with the printouts of the attachments, she said?
I think so, it's, it's this plan, must be the one. I mean, you, you reference a plan, a sketch plan, a sketch by homeowner, that shows the locations, I was assuming it was this.
No, yeah, and it's referencing your left hand.
Okay, so this is clearly over the setback.
And.
But did you, this is what you relied on to stake? The landscape plans? Sorry.
No, 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 no.
Right, so, right, this was for informational purposes only, I feel like, I don't, I don't think you would.
That was literally to just show how my surveyor that I hired, where I'd like to lay the property out.
But it just says, HDC approved plans and sketch of site to show first and second dwelling suggested locations. So she's suggesting the locations based on that plan.
Yeah, but he, but, but.
Well, I'm just saying, there's, there's definitely, uh, too many cooks in the kitchen or something, somebody's not taking the bull by the horns and, and handling this, didn't handle the sighting of the buildings correctly, there was, you can't send somebody a sketch.
But isn't that, but isn't that part of hiring a surveyor, to, to know where things are supposed to, with setbacks?
Not if he's not given a, a plan that shows, he's given an HDC plan, but usually, you know, we send surveyors a full set of drawings that has a foundation plan that shows sonitudes and everything else on it, so.
So he had the foundation plan and he had the sketch, sorry.
So then he works off of that, if he did not get a plan that showed sonitudes on it from somebody, then how is he supposed to, I mean, he's not going to go back to Val's HDC plan to set a building.
I, I'm sorry, I'm confused, because the porch is shown on all the plans that he had.
Right, but usually they, they do it from a foundation plan, right, you send a foundation plan and that's what they stake off.
But Huntington doesn't include that because they don't provide the building for the porch.
You would have had to have some sort of plan that showed the porch with a foundation or with sonitudes and framing to get the building permit, or maybe, maybe the, the building permit is in require.
I don't think they did, I mean, it's.
No, they definitely would require.
I think we should, we should pull the.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I mean, it seems to me that this bylaw, or the, the five-foot surveyor's mistake, whatever it is, is made for this exact situation, okay? Now, and I will say that, you know, Christie is trying to get her house together by herself, and you know, and I probably should have given her more attention than I did. But I did miss the, the front porch, okay? So it didn't get the extra attention that it ought to have gotten. But the other thing is, you know, I catch things all the time, that architects and designers, you know, the first floor doesn't fit on the foundation, the setback violations, the lots, lots and lots and lots every year, and I'm sure the other surveyors could say the same thing, but this I didn't catch. So it is on me. And, but it seems to me, this bylaw is made for this exact situation.
Yeah, I guess I was only saying that I, I actually don't think he caught it, because I don't think he was well-informed enough.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, the point I was making. There were, there, there was too many.
I mean, I think it's an eighty, an eighty-twenty thing, you know, eighty percent of the time I would have caught it, this is in the twenty percent, I did not catch it.
There was a lot of misinformation out there that shows the building closer to, closer to the setback. And, and you were given that information, so it's just confusing for you, I'm not saying that you should have caught it, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of saying, I understand why you didn't catch it. There was way too much information going around that.
No, I, no, I understand, and I appreciate that, but I, I do, you know, this is a surveyor's mistake. And, you know, and you have the authority to go up to five feet, and I think it makes sense, it would be big financial hardship, you know, really.
Okay, so I, I agree with Lisa, I think, I think it seems like it would have been extremely hard for you to catch it with the information that you were given and the information that you weren't given, but I hear you two, uh, Mark and Lisa, you guys are looking for, you'd like to see the foundation plan.
Everything else has been documented except for the foundation.
The one thing, yeah, okay, so may, do.
Why don't you pull the building permit file and, I mean.
Swing back over, do we have it?
Yeah, I have to be somewhere at two thirty.
Oh, you mean go get it right now?
Or, or, like, I'd like to see the, the, the permit drawings.
I can go, I'll go.
The full size, not something cut off.
Sure.
And any drawings that have to, that apply to the porch. But I do have to be somewhere and I have to leave in a half an hour, I was only staying for this application, so.
So. I mean, I'm fine with that, if you want to try to pull that together, and if Lisa has to go, then we'll have to continue till next month.
Or else you just vote with four people.
I don't know that we want to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't want to put Christie in that position, so, um, okay, so are we all okay if she goes over and tries to pull stuff together, and if not, we'll continue?
Sure.
Okay, so, well, first of all, is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak about this now, who can't wait? No, okay, so, uh, does someone want to make a motion to continue this till, uh, later in the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Someone second?
Second.
Okay, uh, so all those in favor of continuing until later in the meeting, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Alright, so we can move on to, um, new business, uh, application six dash twenty, Axon City LLC, uh, eight Center Street, Arthur Reed presenting.
For the record attorney, Arthur Reed. My client, uh, bought this property a little over a year ago. Uh, it's a historic house on Center Street, Wisconsin. Uh, historic cottage, single-story cottage. And, uh, found last summer that the two bedrooms in the house, both of which are on the northerly side of the house, were basically intolerably hot in the summertime. Um, she, it was her first summer with the house, and, uh, uh, you know, I can see these, these are, uh, right under the roof, and, uh, and, uh, it was, it was a hot summer, and we have global warming taking place, and, uh, uh, in any event, uh, it was quite unpleasant. So as a result of that, uh, she has engaged, uh, Brett Watts of Watts Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning to develop a, um, air conditioning system that would take care of those, uh, two bedrooms. And he has, you have the, um, uh, site plan and the, um, HDC materials. He's, uh, 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 obtained HDC approval to place the, um, unit, uh, standing in the fenced area at the northeast, north, uh, northerly corner, northwestly corner of the lot. Uh, the unit would be no closer to either the side property line or the rear property line than the existing house, including the steps that are on the northerly side of the house. Would be setback from the, uh, northerly extent of those, so no new non-conformity would be created.
Those steps go down to a full basement, Arthur?
They go down to a full basement, yes.
And when was that work done, when was the foundation put underneath this house?
I don't know, they, they, uh, this is the way the house was when she bought it a year ago. But it's been there before she owned it, in any event.
But there would have been ZBA approval needed to put that full basement under there, I'm guessing?
I don't know when it was done, uh.
If the steps, yeah, if you, they're putting new steps, there would have had to, then was there anything, uh?
I don't remember this one.
No. I think there was. I seem to remember this one, I talked to the building department, they've gotten there for the.
Yeah, absolutely.
You do, I don't remember.
They should get him to identify himself.
I'm taking a look right now at the, um.
Oh, sorry, yes, sir, sorry, Arthur, can I interrupt you for a second? Can you just, uh, uh, identify yourself for the?
Uh, Brett Watts, Watt Heating and Ventilation, I'm going to be doing the AC work, I'm just here for questions.
Oh, so it's a special permit because they were.
Yes, there is an earlier ZBA special permit issued in nineteen ninety-three, so. Yep, I, I'd overlooked that fact. In any event, the point would be to put it in that location, no closer. And as I mentioned, we're only attempting to cool the two bedrooms, we're not attempting to cool the whole house. Um, you have a letter, I know, from the neighbor immediately to the north, uh, expressing concern about it, and we have a couple of points to raise on that. First of all, uh, that letter suggested that we were attempting to cool the whole house with this unit, and that's not the case. Only those two bedrooms, which are on the northerly side of the house, and it would be much, uh, more expensive and, uh, difficult to try to cool those two rooms with a unit on the, on the southerly end of the house. The other point is that we would, as a matter of right, obviously, be able to put, uh, window units in the two bedrooms, which would be on the side to the north facing the neighbor who wrote the letter. The decibel level of the unit that we proposed to place, the outdoor unit. The decibel level of the unit that we proposed to place, the outdoor unit, per the spec sheet, which we filed along with the application, shows for cooling the sound pressure level as being fifty-two decibels. The comparable air conditioning units of which two would have to be placed, one in each of the two bedrooms, that would have the same cooling capacity, eight thousand BTU units. Per the spec sheet for those, which I have here and can leave with you, for, have a minimum sound level of fifty-four and a maximum sound level of sixty. So that if you had the thing on full blast, it would be sixty decibels and there would be two of them. I don't know, not being a acoustical engineer, what the impact of the second unit is above the first unit, but certainly it's going to increase it. Obviously, it's not going to double it, you know, to add them. But in any event, what we're doing is going to actually be less noisy than would be the case for the window units, which as I say, we'd be able to place without any limitations at all. And those would be elevated above the level of the fence, just by the nature of things, and would not be screened in any way. Would they be unsightly? We don't want to do it. The HDC approval requires us to maintain it within the fence and that it not be visible. We're going to screen it so that it will not be visible at the time of inspection. That was a condition of the approval.
Could I ask a question to the consultant? I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Brett Watts.
Brett Watts, right. Is there an acoust, I don't know what the fence is. I assume it's solid board fence because it's an open board?
Yeah.
I was going to say, is there an exterior acoustical material that could be applied to the inside of the fence that would take some of this decibel level and bring it down? I'm just posing the question more probably because I want to know if there's such a thing.
I've never heard of anything. I mean, I'm sure there's many things that you could put on the fence. The fence is pretty much right by the road and it's an open fence. So you'd be changing the fence at that point, which I don't know.
I got it. And you can't really put an enclosure around this in terms of, because of the air filtration.
Yeah, there'd be an enclosure.
Arthur, did you show the neighbors the specs for these units? Because I am, I'm familiar with these units and they're pretty quiet. So they saw the specs? Well, that's what I'm wondering is it could be included. I don't know if they actually looked at it.
Is there a finished basement in there now? The basement's finished?
Yes.
Why can't it go in the little alcove off of the kitchen?
Put it on your. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Why can't it go in the little, uh?
The jog?
The jog off of the kitchen, near the pump square, as they put it.
That the HGC wouldn't like that.
Well. It's covered by the same fence.
The reason, you're asking the reason why we're not putting it there?
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
That, and, and the answer is it's the wrong end of the house.
But it, you're just running the condensers. You're talking about the condenser.
Not buying that one.
Is it more expensive, a lot more expensive to run a line to the bedrooms?
Well, it's ductwork.
No, the ductwork of the unit would stay in the same place. You're running some pipe.
Is it less?
Some insulated pipe.
Is it less efficient? Because the condenser isn't close?
No, it's not, it's not less efficient. It's, it's more work. It's, it's through an unfinished attic. So it's, it's, it's just what, it's getting there is the issue.
Oh, so you're going to run this stuff through an attic and then, and it gets, so the register would be in the ceiling, not, not underneath, not, not the floor?
Correct. It's getting the refrigerant lines there. You could get them there. Well, that's the trick, is getting them through the attic because the attic's all broken up and it's not, it's not all connected all the way through. So it's either running it around the outside of the house through a finished basement or through the inside of the house essentially.
You could put the line sets on the outside too, though, right?
Not with an HGC.
Not, not.
Not on a building like this. But why can't you go through the attic? The whole attic is finished?
No, partially finished.
So you could, there must be an eave space where you can run in a refrigerant line.
It can be done. Let's just, let's.
Why can't you put it, um?
You know, I, I, I think Arthur brings up an important point that you could put windows units in and they're going to be louder. That, that probably sways me the most, but I, I, I feel like you could just put the condenser.
It just opens the door for other people.
Yeah, yeah.
And the homeowners don't want window units, clearly.
No.
They put window units in there if that's what they really want.
I get unbearably hot, but it's, it's in a historic district, old house, like people have lived there forever, so it can't be that unbearable. But couldn't you put it in this little area that's called the patio that's? And the far, like in the, here, maybe I can just show you.
You can put it anywhere. There's no physical reason.
If you're putting it here, like by this window, why can't you just put it like here?
You'd have to screen.
That's the, that's the front. That's on the street, on the front side. And there's no, I think there may be a.
Well, there's a, there's a fence. Sorry, did I get proper hard on you?
This is right in the front door. That's the front door right there. Yeah. So you can put it there. Potentially you could put it somewhere over here or over here.
Right here.
Yeah.
And it's on their patio area, not impacting the other people's.
Then you're seeing it from pump square, which is what, we were trying to hide it over here where you're not going to see it. Put a lattice.
Have you talked to the neighbors or are we just relying on their letter?
We, we, we just got the letter. I believe they live outside the country.
They're probably still available by phone.
Yeah. Maybe try to have a conversation with them about the, because the, the other argument I think you have that's, that's, you know, as far as noise, it's literally going right outside the window of their bed, their master bedroom. So they're not going to want something super loud.
They are quieter. I will give them that, but.
To say that as somebody who put in geothermal at my house in town and then had a neighbor put one of these units in, it irritates me. I mean, you know, they're noisy.
Definitely. They make noise, there's no doubt.
There's no question about it. So I could see.
Did you say geothermal?
At my house.
Okay.
And then, and then the neighbor put in a condenser on the other side of the head.
A mini, a mini split condenser?
I don't exactly know if it's a mini split, but they're annoying, they're.
Not the big ones.
Variable speed unit. A single stage unit is like getting your car, starting it up with the accelerator all good. It just pulls speed right away. Variable speed, even if it starts slowly, so it slowly ramps up. These units have insulation over the compressor where it's a normal AC unit outside, but not. And it's insulated and then inside insulated and enclosed. So it's literally just like a hump, like a hump in your. They, they will speed up and get a little bit of the decibel.
Well, I think for me, it's more, it's more just a question of opening the door for other people.
I, I agree. I think we've been.
If you drive down that street and look in some of the other ways, people have already put them in without applying for approval. There's a few others.
Well, we should write, send them violation letters.
Yeah, we can't control what people do illegally, unfortunately, so.
Well, we can. I mean, Marcus could write them a, a letter. But I, I think we've been pretty consistent about not allowing AC in the setback. I mean.
We definitely have. There's, we occasionally see it at the zoning administrator level, which I think we should probably see it versus the zoning administrator, but or we just have to come up with a clearer policy in places like Wisconsin where.
Or in town. I mean, downtown, any, any, any place where there are houses that are five feet apart.
I mean, there are options on this building.
Well, I think at the, at a minimum, maybe we should explore, have them explore the options.
Well, and/or I think at a minimum, you should get in touch with the neighbor. The neighbor was mostly concerned about noise. If you're making the argument that this option is much less noisy than option two, window units, you know, you might be able to come to some agreement so that at least everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, it would be nice. Well, it would be nice. It, it makes it.
Makes it a cleaner application if we don't have any others that are.
Right.
That's correct. I, I will suggest that we continue the thing until the April meeting for us to look into the possibility of reaching out to the neighbors, also the possibility of any other alterations.
Maybe talk to the HGC and HDC.
Yeah, I have a serious question whether we'd get the thing approved on the pump square side.
Yeah, I can play something else.
The legal ad is very specific to the northwest corner, so if we're going to potentially recite it in another place, but also in the setback, I should renotice it. I won't require another application fee, but.
I think on the pump square side, it wouldn't be in a setback. Right?
Yeah, because it would be.
You would not need to be.
Probably zero there anyway.
Yeah. Well, it's hard to say where they take it from with zero.
Because of the door.
That's here? Like, I mean, wouldn't you maybe even have to impact their patio if you put it like here with a little fence around it?
But that's on the outside of the.
No, no, you wouldn't put it here because that's, that's probably in the.
That's in the road, probably.
In the, in the alcove that's fenced in.
Yeah, like if you look at this, there's that alcove and that's their property line.
Oh, I didn't realize that, yeah, in here.
Yeah, it would have to go there or here.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but there's some.
And why can't it go here?
I wonder what, I mean, I wonder if there's a ZBA decision.
Yeah, this is along that center street.
Specifies that no further relief should be granted or anything.
Where's the entrance to the stairs here?
Yes.
Because they need a ZBA approval to put that.
All right, let's continue your talk and.
Maybe we can take a look at the previous ZBA approval, so that might have some.
ZA?
Ninety-three.
ZBA special permit.
Oh, about this?
Yeah. Good idea. Okay, so Eleanor, would you include that nineteen ninety-three decision in the next packet? All right, so does someone want to make a motion to continue? Oh, sorry. Oh, the public. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak about this one? No. Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue. When's our next meeting?
April ninth.
April ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I got, I got to go.
Okay.
Unless this is really, really quick. I can't sit on it anyway.
Then why would you stand?
And go, go and we'll continue, Christie.
Are we going to continue the first one?
Uh, yeah, should we do that? Lisa, continue it while you're here? So in the matter, that was oh five twenty, Kay Snyder, thirty Somerset Road. Would someone make a motion to continue to the April ninth hearing?
I mean, the only thought.
She's walking back in now, but.
Go ahead.
Sure. Just identify yourself again.
My name's Joe Markl, I'm a surveyor. I'm involved in this project. So the plan you're waiting for, the foundation plan, when you look at it, what, what decision will be derived from that?
I just want to see the information that was out there. It's important.
But it's, well, let's say if there is a sonotube, oh, sorry.
So there's no further information in the building pile. Everything that I had, it was emailed part of a packet from Huntington, but it doesn't show anything further for any kind of porch design other than stating by owner. And when I, I called the builder and he said they scaled the structure off of the HGC approved plans. And that's how they knew where to put the sonotubes.
Yeah, I don't think placing the sonotube was, was, was difficult. I know why you wanted to say it, but.
I just wanted to see what, what, you know, what Joe was working off of. I think it's, it's just frustrating that the information is so incomplete. You know, when I feel bad.
I called Val, the architect as well.
For Joe to, you know, have to fall on his sword when he has all this really incomplete information. So that's just.
And as the homeowner, I hired the architect and I hired a surveyor and I hired a builder and I paid Huntington. So I thought I had all my pieces accurately planned out and relied upon people doing their job.
Well, it looks like the architecture piece, the site work, work, it was correct. It was somewhere from there to, I mean, I hate to be the cynic, but it looks like, well, you know, a little bit, you get a little bit more patio and whatnot in the back all of a sudden.
With your landscape plan, but.
By just moving the building. Again, nobody in their right mind would do that, but.
Yeah, you know, that's not what happened.
I don't, I don't believe it is, but unfortunately, till we sit up here.
What happened was, I should have caught that there was the porch on the front that I didn't, like I said, many times.
But if you didn't get the information.
You know, there was a consistency with the plan and the homeowner tried to do it. I don't really like working with the homeowners, she's very misleading. It's, this is the stuff that ends up happening. I shouldn't have known that. You know, giving it more attention than I gave it last time. I mean, there's some stuff going on in my life that doesn't allow me to give it full product. So, I mean, I, I think she deserves the.
So, so for me, it, it doesn't really matter how this came about, you know, the question, as Ed stated, is it intentional or unintentional? That's really kind of the crux here. And for me, there's nothing here that says it's intentional. You know, I, you worry if you keep allowing this, that, you know, what is unintentional, as Ed says, you know? I don't feel that there was any intent here. You know, so looking at, in, within the confines of this provision, you know, was it intentional or not intentional? It was relied on by a surveyor, which, you know, that's another fact for me. He fell on the sword. I guess we don't normally have this, unfortunately, when a surveyor makes a mistake. You know, they, they run and hide, so. And, and I guess that's not really a factor either when looking in the context of this provision. You know, then it comes down to whether it's a burden or substantially outweighs things. A burden of correcting it. And this is where it's unique because one, it's, it's a huge intrusion, you know, we've, we've dealt with this with inches and, and two, it's not necessarily part of the structure, so it actually can be remedied. And that's what makes this unique. However, you know, what's the difference if it's two inches or ten feet or whatever this is? Five feet, six feet? In a lot of ways, if it's unintentional, you know, if it's a burden, and I don't know what that, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, I'm looking at these numbers here. Maybe this falls in with, this isn't burdensome. I, I don't know. I don't think you could put a specific number on it. And that's what I struggle with, but I feel these numbers are significant enough that, and I have to say that the porch looks good, not that that factors in here either. I've driven by, it looks good.
I think that's a good point, though. I mean, in, in, in reality, it would be a burden to the entire community if we were to make you take this porch off. The building would look lousy.
And obviously, moving the building is a huge burden.
Obviously, moving the building is a huge burden.
Is the basement finished?
By that argument, if it looks good.
No, no.
Right, that's what I mean.
In any case, not just this one.
I said, and I, I qualified, it looks great, but that doesn't factor in any decision here. And it's, some people on the board say sometimes it's one of these days. And, and what they're saying is, what is the amount? I mean, this, to a lot of people, this isn't substantial. I mean, this is not a substantial burden, so.
It's, it's not a substantial burden?
Maybe, I don't know. I mean, I think it is, but, but I don't think there's a threshold, there's no specific threshold, right? So, nor will there ever be to say whether something's substantial or not. It's surprisingly lower than I thought, I have to say. I mean, when you think of, we had a situation, where was it? On Surfside, where it was very similar, there wasn't a mistake on the, or an oversight on the, uh, survey, but they, they, they poured the foundation, if you recall, because they were in a hurry.
Oh, I remember. I had Kiva later.
Yeah, and we kind of said, you know, it was a mistake. I, I think we said this, it was a mistake and are we going to? are we gonna make a move, the building, for it being over by a couple inches? And clearly, it was no. Whereas this one, you know.
It's over by a lot, that's.
It's over by a lot, and it's, it can be remedied.
Right.
And if you look at, you know, if you look at it, and again, I'm, I'm trying to think out loud, but the, compared to the cost of the house and all that, I don't, I don't know if it's that big a percentage.
Yeah. I mean, I think my frustration is that both buildings, and I think it was probably by luck that the cottage was actually okay, were put right on the thirty-foot line. You know, and had, I mean, not that, I don't do that all the time, but, I mean, it might go thirty-one feet, you know, so you get a little bit of a break, but, you know, you cut it really, really close.
And unfortunately, with regard to all these plans and things missing, like, it's a lesson learned. That's, that's what you take away from this. Because it's either unintentional or intentional, you know? And to me, it was unintentional, so. So I'm, you know, the way I would come down personally is I would vote to grant it. It's the long, long of it. And hope that people don't use this as a, say, you know, it's an excuse, or I unintentionally, you know.
I don't think anybody's coming inside.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we have that risk, I know, I know. It's for us to, it's for us to decide.
Is there anyone from the public to speak about this one? So do we, do we wanna vote?
Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, someone should make a motion. I mean, there's no more information to be had.
I'll make the motion to approve the relief requested.
I was gonna make an amendment to that motion to include grading up to remove the front step.
Just on the main house, not on the cottage?
Well, she has a CO on the cottage, nothing we can.
Yeah, okay, I don't think we can.
Include grading up to, sorry?
To remove the front step.
Do you, do you have a zoning shed on the property?
A zone, I'm sorry, I don't know what.
Not yet. One, one, as a pre-pro quo?
Yeah, we'll restrict a zoning shed.
Yes, and add those restrictions.
It's less than two hundred square feet, you get one zoning shed, it does not count wood ground cover, but have to leave the setbacks.
Yes, there is a shed on the property. Sorry, I didn't understand.
There already is one.
Does it show on the asphalt?
It's on the site, it's on the asphalt.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Oh, I'm not voting, so.
Okay, so.
So we can't restrict a shed?
No.
I mean, we could have her remove the shed.
How about further expansion? Is there ground cover available?
There's just over four hundred square feet available.
We could do that.
So no, no further expansion without?
Without further relief from this board.
And, and the front step.
And the front step removal.
I would, I would, I would agree with that, second that.
Or grade up to it. She said that she had already looked into grading up the grade to eliminate that front step.
Eliminate the granite step that's further into the setback from the twenty-five feet.
You know, or at least a foot further out of the setback. Okay, so there's the motion.
And no further expansion.
And no further expansion, all those.
So now, now we're making a motion.
So Jim did.
Jim made the motion.
And I seconded it.
Jeff seconded, and voting, amended motion. Voting is myself, Lisa, Jeff, Jim, and Mark. All right, so all those in favor?
So no further ground cover, remove the granite step, and adjust the rating accordingly. Right?
Okay, I have to.
Correct.
Yeah.
Without relief from the board.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
You're opposed?
That's not mine.
Thank you. Um, do you want this for the file?
What are these days? Alice.
That's why I was, that's why I was chuckling when you, you said.
Yeah. Well, I like to say it too, even though I'm the one.
Come on down, young lady.
All right.
I'm a little, I'm a little scared of you guys, I have to say. You guys are mean.
Yeah, don't, don't mix this all.
Don't get him started.
I know you're gonna attack me. I'm already, that's why I'm like practically crawling down the aisle.
That's Bill on vacation, he's full of you-know-what.
No, no, no.
Okay. All right, so next is application number, uh, sorry, did I just? So seven-twenty, Andrew P. Prigg and Kurt F. Somerville, trustees of Perizo, Nantucket Realty Trust, for ten Filling Mill Roads, Sarah Alger representing.
Yes, Sarah Alger for the applicant. So this is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot in the, that Shimo area that was for a long time zoned LUG one, was then increased to LUG three, had the provision in the bylaw for a period of time where you could still build up to the LUG three zoning of seven percent. That was never taken advantage of. The house, the existing house, well, let me tell you about the lot area first. So the lot area is seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and nine square feet. There is within the lot a fifty-foot wide private way. If you were to include that fifty-foot wide private way in the lot area, you'd have ninety-two thousand oh-eighty-one. Some of the past plans look as though maybe that was considered. I was looking at the bylaw, though, and I think it's pretty clear that that way isn't counted. So we've, we've excluded it at seventy-nine thousand seven oh-nine. At three percent, we would be allowed two thousand three hundred and ninety-one square feet. The property is currently improved with a pre-existing, non-conforming house and a pre-existing, non-conforming shed. They have total ground cover of two thousand seven forty-eight square feet. That's about three hundred and fifty-seven square feet more than what would be allowed at three percent. The applicants are proposing to demolish all, or at least substantially all of the structures, and to rebuild. And under one-thirty-nine thirty-three A, three and four, they have to come in for a special permit before they do the demolition so that they can build back up to that two thousand seven forty-eight square feet. And that's kind of the, the long and short of it. All the construction will meet all applicable dimensional requirements of the bylaw.
Was the shed built with a building permit?
Yes.
When was that built?
I don't have the exact date, but pre.
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 Pre LUG three.
Yeah.
What do you mean? Well, if it were the zone, you said we wouldn't be talking about it as the.
Yeah, no, it wasn't built at a time we had that shed permit requirement.
So you have evidence to that, that you can just stick in the file?
Yeah, everything is pre-existing, non-conforming. This was Hammy Heard's house. For a long time.
Isn't this almost identical to what Randy Sharp just did here, a week or two ago, or a month ago?
We've had a number of these, they're, in fact, we've had.
I've had a couple of them. Yeah.
Half a dozen.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either. Does anyone have any issue about, like, any feeling about the private way or not private way?
It's, I don't even really even know why I brought it up. I mean, the only.
I thought it was just simply to cloud.
No.
A red herring?
No, not really.
I'm thinking, I'm, what is this man?
I, I think the reason that I brought it up is when I was originally looking at this, the builder thought we could include the way and that it would meet the three percent, because it would meet the three percent if we counted the, the way. But I came to the conclusion that we can't. You can certainly contradict me, but I don't know why you would.
And there's no, there was no mail on this one from butters.
Eleanor, do you know if others have counted the way? Because it seems to me like it has been counted, but maybe that was another. Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, no, I'm thinking of that one.
Does anyone have any comments about this one?
Do you wanna talk about the shed? The extra shed, or they get the shed too? Do we ever restrict it, like when Randy was in there? Do we restrict it to no, no zoning shed?
Like they can keep the one-thirty-three shed?
No, no, they can keep the excess ground cover.
We're keeping that ground cover.
They don't get the extra two hundred. I don't.
I don't see any reason to restrict it.
Yeah.
I don't think I do either.
I don't.
Okay.
Does anyone wanna make a motion? Yeah. Oh, I thought I did say public. Is anyone in the public? Okay. I thought I did, sorry. I thought I said it when I was saying about the mail. Okay. So does someone want to make a motion for this one?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the relief as requested.
I'll second.
Okay, um, do we wanna vote from Ed down this time? Sure, okay. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Go crawl out of here now.
I know, right?
See, we were so nice.
I'm leaving before something got.
Ed's become the shed police today.
I'm just saying, quit, quit pro quo is all I'm saying.
The shed shareup.
I think we're gonna have a town meeting. I think we're gonna have a town meeting.
So are we discussing?
What? Continuing it? Okay. I'm not sitting on this one. Do you want me to move? Or does it matter? Because it's just, okay.
We're not opening this for any, I mean, it's.
You're just saying, like, I don't, I just, I'm not, right, okay.
Yeah, I just briefly wanna thank the board for their support to get this matter resolved. And we are, we have requested to continue it. We received a proposal from Howard Edelman, who's really been the homeowner designee, and Josh last Friday, and had a chance to speak with Howard about it over the weekend. And, and we believe we may be making some progress and hope to have something good to report at the next ZBA meeting. Thank you.
Great.
Great. That's good.
That it?
I'll make a motion adjourn.
Great.
Second.
That's a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.